Oh, really? Now, that's an interesting one. What kind of party?
Good evening. It's the appointed time of 5:30. I would like to call the July 26, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will you please call the roll? I can call it.
It's all right.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Flugenzey. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenso. Here. Alderwoman McMenamin. I believe he's on the phone. Alderwoman Conley, I believe she's on the phone. Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
You always do that.
I'm sorry, I know. I know the difference. A quorum is present. All right, do we have a pro- oh, first, do we have a motion to approve Alderman McMenamin and Alderwoman Conley to participate via phone?
Move.
Second.
Alderman Flugenzey.
Is Alderman Flugenzey on the phone as well?
He is not.
No. Okay.
Yes, we have you, Alderman.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can we get approval of the two-stage July 12, 2022 Committee meeting?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have no presentations this evening?
No presentations, Madam Chair.
Wowza. Ordinants tabled are remaining in committee. Are we going to pull anything out tonight, anyone? Moving right along.
We should probably go ahead and read at least the numbers. 2021-337, 2022-256, 2022-285.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess 2021-337, Mr. Circle, is that one that we need to keep in? Or is that something since we?
I would say that that would be appropriate to withdraw that ordinance.
I make a motion to withdraw.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to withdraw 2021-337. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, C W L P.
Would you like to start with 221-337?
I thought we just moved to withdraw it.
We withdrew it.
Withdraw it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. C W L P, 2022-323, an ordinance approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in the amount of $500,000 under contract number UE 22-06-38 by Prada calling for the Dahlman Power Plant with Oros Environmental Incorporated for a total amount payable of $1 million for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2022-324, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 23-04-27, Unit 4 Fire Suppression additions with FE Moran Incorporated, Special Hazard Systems in an amount not to exceed $594,669 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2022-325, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 23-06-45, Growth Street Phase 2 Lot Repair Upgrade with Truman L. Flat and Sons Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $93,463 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Appointed parliamentary procedure. Mr. Clerk, it was just notified by Alderwoman Conley that she cannot hear. She cannot hear.
Can she hear this?
Can you ask her to call in again, please? I will.
Oh, I just heard that. Okay, I will let her know. Call back. Oh, Frank, you just hung up on him.
I think we dropped the call.
All right.
She going to call back?
Yep.
I instructed her to do so.
Oh, there they are.
Therein.
Alderwoman, are you there? Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, she's here. Can you hear us?
Barely.
Okay.
She doesn't have to be so testy about it. All right, so we're at 325, it passed?
Yes.
Moved to debate? All right.
Consent.
I'm sorry, move to consent. So, we're on 2022-326?
2022-326, an ordinance approving an agreement with Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated that amends two previous professional services agreements and provides for engineering services in regards to the revision to the supplemental water supply, supplemental environmental impact statement in an amount not to exceed $285,488 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second. We have a motion for consent in a second.
Debate, McMenamin.
A motion for debate, Alderman McMenamin. Do we have a second?
Second.
In a second. Any discussion, Alderman?
No.
Okay, so motion for debate in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Clerk, I'm a present on that one.
Noted.
Thank you.
2022-327, an ordinance approving an amendment to intergovernmental agreement for the telecommunications contract service with the State of Illinois Department of Innovation and Technology State for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Thank you. We have a motion for consent in a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be clear, in the ordinance and in the summary, it says 110,000, and the summary below on the agenda, it says 10,000. It is indeed supposed to be 110, right? Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for consent in a second on 327. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2022-328, an ordinance declaring various transmission line and equipment as surplus property and accepting the authorizing the execution of an asset purchase agreement with Ameren Illinois doing business as Ameren Illinois for the purchase of acquisition of said transmission line, equipment, and the related partial easement rights in an amount of $110,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Thank you. We have a motion for consent in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Public Works, 2022-329, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW 22-09-58 with Capital Construction Group LLC doing business as EGZ Electric for construction services for the downtown traffic signal modernization and one-way streets conversion project, MFT Section Number 19-00489-00-TL in an amount not to exceed $4,588,904.05 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2022-330, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that lower fuel tax rebuild funds in an amount of $4,588,904.05 may be used for the construction phase of the downtown traffic signals, modernization, and one-way streets conversion project, MFT Section Number 19-00489-00-TL for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Present. Opposed?
Noted.
Motion carries.
2022-331, a resolution for the temporary closure of a portion of Illinois state routes 97 and 29, Jefferson Street from Sixth Street to Ninth Streets for the Powerline Abe's Car Show Cruise to be held on August 5, 2022 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
General City Business, 2022-332, an ordinance approving the reappointment of H. Edward Kramer, P.E., to the Mechanical Commission.
Move for debate.
Second. Motion for debate in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2022-333, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Ryan Crook to the Mid Illinois Medical District Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
Are any of these, if any of these people are here, can they come up?
Yeah, if anyone's, well, let me do my job, Alderman. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Didn't do my request to speak.
Goodness gracious. I do have something on Ryan Crook, who is a friend of mine. He does not long, he no longer lives in the city of Springfield, he lives in Leland Grove. Is that an issue for anyone? I thought our appointees were supposed to be city residents.
Yeah.
But for this, I.
Yes, Alderwoman Purchase.
With this being the Illinois Medical District, isn't that kind of like state? So, does it matter if he, as long as he's in this?
I know it's the pleasure of the mayor for him to serve, but it's our rules that they're supposed to live in Springfield.
No sense of following the rules now. We've been doing it a long, long.
Alderman Williams.
We have to go with the rule. There's people in the past that's been in this situation. We told them, you know, you don't live in Springfield and you can't serve.
Sorry, I was kind of far back.
Alderman Gregory.
I would just like to hear from the mayor's, his appointment on, certainly he would know of any rule, and he may know of a reason why he's on this board, so I'd like to hear from him.
Because he used to live in Springfield. Okay. Let my boy answer.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. I think Ryan Crook's on his way, but it's the Medical District Board, which is established by the State of Illinois, so it's somewhat different, but Corporation Council can, we'd have to defer to him if it meets the parameters, but again, it's up to the city council what your pleasure is, but he has served in that capacity prior to, so that's why we brought him forward. And I think there's another one on this, so the next one's in the same boat, I believe.
Joe?
Here's, you know, I'm just going to say, we expect our employees, everyone but the Springfield Police Department has a residency clause. I think we need to be very careful about how we handle our boards and commissions. You know, I don't think it's bad to have people outside the city serve on boards and commissions, but if the rule is, and especially for people that we employ, then that's the rule.
So, Alderman Redpath.
The only thing I could say is that if we have a, if there's a distinct reason that the board is different than our boards and commissions, if this is a Mid Illinois situation, Corporation Council, if you can, if you could clarify that, that it might be something What I've made a note, I will look at the statute. If you recall, our rule addresses city-created commissions and boards. This particular board is actually created by state law. I think the governor has a certain number of appointments, I think the mayor does. So, what I would like to do is look at the statute and see what it specifies for membership. And I'll be happy to do that before the council meeting. So, Madam Chairman, I think what we should probably do is go ahead and put these on the debate agenda, so Corporation Council could get back to us, because it seems like it's going to be a different situation than our regular boards and commissions, and these are the mayor's picks, and two good people, and we don't want to walk away from two good people.
No, we don't. Alderman Donlin.
Alderman Redpath said pretty much exactly what I was going to suggest. I just would recommend debate.
And Alderman Hanauer?
The only thing, is this one, Mayor, where we have, you know, Memorial and St. John's, that they present, they give us people's names, and then kind of a pass, we're a pass-through on this, is that kind of how this works, or is this one that we actually go out and find them and?
Is that right?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Actually, that was, I'm going from memory, but I think I did confer with Mr. Hurwitz's appointment with Memorial, and then St. John's has one. I can't remember if it's a state appointment or not.
Right.
And the differential between, you know, just to clarify with regards to employees, the reason employees should live in the city is because property taxes pay for pensions, and that's the driving factor. Both the individuals we're talking about, I know they work in the city, but, you know, it's an unpaid board, but again, I think on this case, it refers to whatever the state statute in comparison to what we have in code, how that matches up. But that's the differential with regards to residency. It's a distinct difference with regards to employees, because we have to pay their, you know, pensions, rightfully so, and all of our property taxes plus go towards pensions.
And then, just one more thing, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, we're getting a lot of resumes that aren't updated with current addresses. You know, we get these resumes, and we know the people, so we know if they've moved.
Ryan Crook.
And we know, you know, so we know when people have moved, because Ryan used to be my neighbor. So, you know, we need to make sure we get updated resumes when people are submitting their resumes. If we're just using their old resumes, their addresses could have changed from the time we use their, if it's a reappointment especially.
Call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't appreciate you cutting off that debate. Ryan, since you're here, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Joe.
Hi, Ryan. Good evening. Thanks so much for the time. Sorry I was a little behind. Well, Mayor, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity. I think it's quite a privilege to serve on the Mid Illinois Medical District Commission and to do my part to try to lead the way. In just the past few years, I think we've made substantial progress, and I think there's great enthusiasm about what we have in store. If I may, just highlight a few items that I think are noteworthy. First, thanks to strong partnership with the Office of the Governor, we've been able to restore the board to a full complement of members. We've gotten some excellent and diverse people with a variety of professional backgrounds to fill all of the seats on the board that had been an issue. Second, we've established very strong partnerships with all of the anchors in the medical district, all of the hospitals, the medical school. We're all working tightly together, trying to coordinate priorities. Of course, the neighborhood and government. There is a medical district in the city of Chicago, the Illinois Medical District. We've been in communication with their board and their staff and tried to emulate some of their successes. And then finally, we've had great success in getting planning momentum going again in partnership with Downtown Springfield and the medical district. We're making progress, again, with the Community Foundation for the Land of Lincoln and others to put forward a new strategic vision for the medical district that's not 15 years old, trying not to stand still and make good progress for the community. I think, as you all know, there's a strategic plan now underway. A vendor has been selected, and a lot of people feel very optimistic about it. Last but not least, there's a quarter of a million dollars in the state budget, thanks to the mayor, thanks to all the members of the city council who were strong advocates for that. Senator Doris Turner really was a champion in the General Assembly to get some funding behind the medical district's priorities. It's a modest amount, I know, but it, I think, is good momentum that we need and that is a signal to all of the anchors that we can do good things, we can do big things in the medical district. And then we've done some little things that I think are worth mentioning. We refreshed the website, we have a new public map of the medical district. We're going to do more with all of the institutions within that one square mile to make good things happen for Springfield. Thanks. I'm sorry if I went on for too long. I really appreciate your time.
Love the enthusiasm, Ryan. Thank you.
That's all we need.
Thank you.
Love it. Joe, you've got a tough act to follow. Thanks for coming. Go ahead. Oh. Motion for debate.
We got to read it. We got to read it.
No, we already read it, I thought, for Ryan.
I did.
You did?
We have a motion in a second for debate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ralph, you're going to get in trouble today.
I know.
2022-334, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Joseph Hurwitz to the Mid Illinois Medical District Commission.
Move for debate.
Debate, second.
Motion for debate in a second. Mr. Hurwitz?
Wait a minute. This one I'm going to oppose.
I want to echo what Ryan said. No, on a serious note, thank you, Mayor, for reappointing me. Secondly, it is a generalized state board, unlike a city board. But lastly, I will say on a very serious note, Ryan has brought a tremendous amount of enthusiasm. He's done a great job of pulling the board back together. We have, we have a lot of challenges in this district, unlike Chicago, where Chicago owns 30 acres of land, and they basically have become a development arm for the med district up there. Here, we have challenges that there's just a lot of individual property owners, all of whom, and rightfully so, say, hey, my property's worth this many dollars, and maybe one day it would be if the hospital would buy it, but it doesn't allow a lot of development on a speculative basis, which is hopefully what this quarter million dollars will provide. And, you know, if you all choose that we can live outside the city, and that I'm proud to continue to serve, and I appreciate your time. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for your service, Joe.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second for debate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2022-335, an ordinance approving the appointment of Betsy Dollar to the Springfield Convention and Visitors Advisory Board.
Move for debate.
Second.
We have a motion for debate in a second, and I believe this Dollar is here. Yes, she is.
Yes, she is. Now, you have to have the same energy.
So, hi, I'm Betsy Dollar. I'm the Executive Director of the Springfield Art Association. I have been in Springfield now for almost 14 years and done a lot with downtown Springfield. I'm also the President of the Board of the Kidzium. I'm very interested between our, both of those organizations in increasing the number of people who are coming to Springfield and enjoying maybe not just Mr. Lincoln or not just one thing that Springfield is famous for, but expanding their horizons and learning that there are so many other interesting things to do here in Springfield. So, I think this is a good opportunity to get involved in some of that. There's an executive directors group called Smash that has been discussing working on a cultural district downtown, and I think there's a lot of potential with that as well. So, I'm just here for the ride.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion for debate in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
2022-336, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of four professional internship agreements with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois in an amount not to exceed $102,501.76 for the Office of Budget Management.
Move for debate.
Motion.
Second.
Motion for debate in a second.
Madam Chair, I'd like to change that to consent.
Second.
Motion for consent in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Oh.
Go ahead, Alderman Conley.
Thank you. Chair, could we just have a summary of which offices these four positions will be working in?
What offices would they be working in? Director McCarty said he will get that information to the council.
Okay, thank you.
So, motion for consent in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2022-337, an ordinance authorizing the creation of an exterior rehabilitation program for exterior rehabilitation purposes for the areas of the cities outside of TIP districts and the Cannabis Grant District utilizing House Building Code violation fines and registration fees collected in an amount not to exceed $300,000, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $300,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Chair, this is an ordinance I've been working on. If you don't mind, I'd like to hold it in committee just so I can, excuse me, so I can be in council chambers just to go over a little bit more what the program is. I also have one minor amendment for it.
Second.
So, motion to hold? And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, do we have any unfinished business? Alderman Hanauer.
Just wanting to, last week, the Enos Park was on, it was in for, to come back to committee. Where, do we, do we need to do that, or does it, did it, was it supposed to be dealt with last week, and we just got reassigned to the wrong place? Just want to make sure that we don't, or we're holding it, or?
Can I speak?
Yes.
It's 285, yeah.
Yes, Alderwoman Purchase, go ahead.
Let me ask this too, even though I'm going to recuse myself from voting on it, I can still talk about it, right? Okay, so yes, we wanted to hold it until next week to come out and have, as Alderwoman DeCenso said, we shouldn't have any more discussion and be ready to vote on it on the third.
All right.
It is.
I just thought I'd bring it.
I want clarification on that. We're not speaking on it. We should always be able to discuss.
I was joking, because we had talked about it for so long.
I'm making sure she knows that's a joke and not, we will discuss.
I was joking.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone can discuss anything they want to discuss.
Yes.
I'm not the queen of discussion. Or non-discussion. Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, I think this is a question for the police department, but the enforcement for the new ordinance that we just put in about the safety rules on solicitation on the corners, who's going to do the enforcement on that? And has it started? Because I have a constant person standing at the corner of Dirksen and South Grand every day, and the same thing on Stevenson and Dirksen. So, could you?
Yeah, well, the police is the enforcement entity, of course, but I'll let them speak to how that approach will be handled.
And it's not just a thing, Mayor, that he's standing on the side of the road. He crosses out into the street every day. And it's not just a thing, Mayor, that he's standing on the side of the road. He crosses out into the street every day. Every day is on the main islands.
We are prepared to enforce that, and when you see that, please call, and we will send an officer out.
You know what? Officers drive by them every day, and I hate to out them, but they are. And so, they gotta- they gotta take a little proactive action on this, because this guy's gonna get killed, because he's walking out in the middle of the intersection every day.
In which- I was- sorry, I was walking up. I didn't hear.
South Grand and Dirksen, and then Stevenson and Dirksen. Now, I know it's in wards two and three, but it affects my area, because everybody in Ward one has to drive through there to get it, so.
Yeah, we'll send a reminder out.
We'll definitely have people out there making sure.
Thank you. And then the second thing was, not for you. Corporation Council, we talked to you about a situation at the lake at Hawthorne Place. That gentleman has not heard from your staff yet. Could you follow up with that tomorrow, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are- we have, just briefly, I don't want to get into the detail, but we have gathered, I think, most of the information. I think there've been one or two police reports, so I think we have pretty much everything we need.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, we had a situation that I talked about it some weeks ago, about a certain business in our community that, you know, was troubling. We've had some murders and things added, so I do want to compliment our city departments and our police department for getting that together. You know, I roll by every day, and then, you know, we've ridden that situation. Now, my second area of Demar Luther King and Stewart area that we have, you know, I want to compliment the ladies with the pink cuffs, because every time I ride by, it's one of them over there dealing with it. So, I just want to encourage us to continue that up, and definitely we gotta get it cleaned up. I've talked to Mr. Harris, you know, about some actions, but the only reason I'm bringing up these two areas is because they are consistently bad, and I'm talking about real bad. So, you know, at times, you know, these type of areas have to get some special attention, and I hope that we keep it up, especially in this Demar Luther King and Stewart area, because I'm tired of looking at it. The community's tired of looking at it, and the lady elder across the street, she is not happy about it. So, we, you know, I appreciate you guys and just keep that up, so appreciate you.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not to prolong the meeting, because I'm not one to want to do that usually, but since we're all in the same room, I thought it'd be easier to ask this question. I had- and Public Works is on this, and like they always are, they're always so helpful. I have a situation in one of my intersections in Ward nine that where there's brush at each, like you're pulling out onto a road, and there's brush on the right, brush on the left. It's very difficult to see the oncoming cars, and Public Works is going through the process, but my question is for Corporation Councils, surely we don't have to go through that entire process. If it's a safety hazard, doesn't the city have the ability to remedy the situation right away?
Excuse me, for- if you're talking about debris or-
Yeah, like the tree branches are down into the sidewalk, and you just can't see.
And any kind of a situation like that that represents a public safety issue, generally speaking, the city departments are authorized to take immediate steps where there's a clear issue of public safety. That includes even such things to see how far that can go. That can include even demolition of structures if they're eminently dangerous.
Okay. I'll speak to Public Works about it. I appreciate the clarification while we're all in the same room. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business? No new business? Oh. Oh.
Not so fast.
Mayor Langfelder, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a few announcements tonight, since we may end early. Knock on wood. The Abraham Lincoln Tomb of Flag Ceremony's tonight at seven, and then also the municipal bands at seven-thirty at Duncan Park. And then, of course, Thursday night is the Levitt Concert Series.
And there are two Levitt Concert Series next week, correct? Wednesday and Thursday?
For the makeup.
Okay. And since it is such a short meeting, I normally wouldn't do this, but my son is turning fourteen on Saturday.
Happy birthday.
Birthday stand, man.
So, the poor guy has been, you know, watching me run for office for the past ten years. He's been tortured. I've now been called cringey. He's wrong. I'm not, but it is his birthday, and I'd like to wish him a happy birthday. He's not listening to this, and he won't see this, so.
There is no way he's listening.
But I want to know that I did.
I know what he doing.
Any other new business? Any citizens to address the council? None signed up?
Alice Raymond.
Alice, come on up, Alice.
What'd you say, Sean?
Remind you, you can't phone call sometime to wear a fur coat.
It's chilly in here.
I want to thank all you people. It's a pleasure to be sitting up here and listening to you guys debate on certain things, but I have a very big problem. One is that the garbage man of waste management loves that little handle and throws the garbage that's not in the garbage can back on the ground, okay? I caught one of them, and I took a picture of him, and he's been pretty good since then, okay? But there is a lot of garbage, and they leave the garbage can out in the middle of the street, and they think that's fun, but it's not. They have been doing sloppy work for a long, long time, and I believe you brought it up several times, okay? And another thing is that you're gonna have two old ladies out on Livingston Street with a blowtorch if we don't get the grass taken care of on that sidewalk, which they did not finish their job, and one of them is me.
And the other one's your sister?
No, not my sister.
Okay.
Another lady. My sister would do it. Absolutely. You know that. So, that's another one. And another one is, I'm glad you finally found someone for economic development.
Alice, you're supposed to address the chair, not the mayor.
Well, I'm sorry, but I can thank you and thank him at the same time, you know? Anyway, I want to thank you, okay? Even though you're not gonna vote on her until in April, is she gonna be qualified to do the job that is required to do for these houses to get done in a proper time? Hello?
I'll let you speak, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, specifically around your area, in Poplar Place, that project's moving forward, so yes, the answer- short answer is yes, she is qualified.
I know she is. I didn't need your answer. I knew she is, okay? You forget, I know a lot of these people.
Thought you wanted it.
That's right. Thank you, guys. Have a beautiful night, and God bless you all, and happy birthday to your young son.
Thank you.
Okay?
Anyone else to address the council?
Listen to adjourn.
Oh, yep, come on up.
Sorry, I don't mean to delay these any longer, but I just want to let you guys know of a couple of things. Coming up this weekend at Shields, we have a Battle of the Badges, police department versus the fire department in a dunk tank to raise money.
Are you in there?
I will be in the dunk tank.
Oh, we're gonna be there.
She will be in the dunk tank at some point, so come out. My shift is at ten-thirty, so come out about eleven, and we'll be all good. I think that's when he'll probably be in there, but come out and support that. Believe the charities, the outlet, and the Kidzium for that event. And then next week, we'll be all over town, the police department for National Night Out on Tuesday, so.
What time does the Shields event start?
Ten AM. We'll be out there serving hot dogs. NPLs will be out cooking, and we'll have representatives out there from the police department, and I'm sure the fire department have some trucks and-
Find her about next week. Council meeting on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, next week, the council meeting is Wednesday night. I know I won't be here, and I know Alderman Hanauer won't be here either, because Tuesday is National Night Out, so how many people- how many wards have events for National Night Out? Okay. All right, so we had a motion to adjourn.
Listen to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. You are welcome, everybody.
This is wild. Hey, uh- Mike was saying Ma'Keisha's on the-
Thank you.
On the hot light. Mike says Ma'Keisha was on the hot light. But what was he saying? God, please not him.
Yes, sir.